Okay, that's all.
All right, with that said, we will move to item three, the invocation. If Mr. Michael Murphy could step forward and lead us in the invocation, please. We could have Mike Cameron, please come forward for a pledge of allegiance, please.
I'm representing Walden Crossing and the Marine Corps, the Muffin Marine Corps Association. Tomorrow is Veterans Day, was it, observe? So please talk to a veteran, give him a love or something, him or her, a little time. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty as justice for all.
Tomorrow, November 10th, is also the Marine Corps birthday. With that, we'd like to move to item five, the approval of the agenda. I'm certain all the council members have been provided a copy of the agenda. Anyone, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I motion to approve the agenda as written.
I second. Having made motion and approved, and second, I'd like to call a vote. All those in favor of approving the agenda as written, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Hearing no opposition, ayes have it, thank you, we can move forward. To item six, which is the public agenda. At this point in time, Madam Clerk, do we have any people who signed the comment card?
Yes, I have six public comment cards. I am calling the names in order that I received them. And I just want to make sure you understand, this is public comment portion of the agenda. It's the same as we've always done, there's a two-minute time limit. We will have a public hearing, which is entirely different, will be on the spending plan, and the mayor and attorney will be calling you up for that, if you want to speak on that. But this is just public comment at this time. And my first person was Joe Laumann of 1106 Summer Street Trace, and he's a District One resident.
As they're making their way up, I was notified that our live stream is having issues. So if we could see what's happening with our live stream. Please proceed.
Good evening, my name is Joe Laumann, and I am the regional manager for the South Child Region of the Public Library. And I'm just here today to put out, let you know that the South Child Region has five branches, but you have a regional library right in the middle of the city of Mableton. So the library would like to be your source of information. And I just want to mention two programs that we have going now. We do have books by mail for those who are unable to come to the library physically. So if you know anybody, we do have that. And we also have Chromebooks that are internet-enabled that can be checked out for 21 days. So if you know people who need internet, we have that at the library. And at one of our branches, we are starting a new program. If you have children who may be interested in learning to play the ukulele, the West Georgia Ukulele Ensemble will be at the Sweetwater Library teaching them how to play the ukulele on Saturday mornings. They don't need an instrument because we have the instruments that they can check out and take home. So when I wanted to make public comment, Madam Clerk said, "You only have two minutes. Can you do it in two minutes?" I said, "Yes, I can do it in two minutes." Because she knows I could stand here all day and talk about the library. So we look forward to seeing you at your library soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Monica Delancy, she has a P.O. box, and she did not say her district.
Monica Delancy, District Two. First, I would like to reference the eviction court that Cobb County, we put in place. Let me just tell you about that. First of all, it would not allow people who have, who do not have children under age 18 that reside with them to be a part of the program. We have to recognize the fact that we have many people that live in Mableton that do not have children. So therefore, that program excludes those people. We have senior citizens who do not have young children at home. We have single households. So therefore, we cannot just rely on this, that program, even though we're glad that it's been put in place, we just can't rely on that program. In addition to that, that program that is receiving federal funds did not put out a request for proposals. It just automatically gave the funds to one nonprofit. I can see it was a private donation, but it was not. So why was that program not under the same guidelines as other programs, like the Community Development Block grant? It requires request for proposals. So City of Mableton, I need for you to ask those questions. I need for those ears to come back to us, all right? Also, I wanted to state that the City of Mableton has, on paper, 35 apartment complexes, not including your subdivisions that are heavily rented as well. So I didn't see that a part of your spending plan, but I'm gonna talk about that when it's time for it. But you're gonna have to, you know, start out strong, making sure that you represent and make sure that you be at the table when it's about renters' rights. Again, my name is Monica Delancy. I want to also state that I receive about 30 calls a day, 30 calls a day, between two phones, dealing with this rental crisis, eviction crisis. Thank you again.
Ben Williams of 5307 Elsie Lane Southwest, District Five.
Okay, good evening, members of the council, brother chair, staff. I just want to take a couple of minutes. I have been in attendance, I believe, at all the meetings except two. And I spent my time trying to observe how this council would begin to gel and come together, okay? And I'm pleased to say that although I do not expect a salute the leader, members on this board, but to be opinionated, but I can see personally the synergy that's being evidenced by this committee in terms of looking at the work that's put before you. So one, I want to commend you on that. That is encouraging to me, although the work is hard, and sometimes we have to do bump and grind, but nobody falls out, okay? So kudos to the council. My encouragement is that you stay the, stay the course. We are right now about ready to make what I see as a major transition in the functioning of this, of this council, being less dependent and more interdependent. Thank you so much.
Joyce Steele of 5149 Stony Fort Court, District Four.
Hello, council members and members of the community. First, thank you for allowing us to make these public comments. I started coming to these meetings, the very, very first few that I was aware of that we were having them, so I was here. And then I wasn't aware that we were having the meetings, because it's still very difficult for folks who are not piped in to know that we're even having these meetings. And when we first started, you know, we knew we were new, everything was getting started, and so on and so forth. But we've got to get to the point where the average person who does not have access to folks in the room, or to you all, to know that we're having these meetings. It just so happened, somebody reached out to me two days ago, and that's why I'm at the meeting now. When I know about the meetings, I show up for the meetings, whether it's live stream, because I can start doing that, and I'm glad I didn't do that tonight, because it doesn't sound like it's working. But what can we, as a committee and as a community, ensure that everyone has the access to what's going on and what's taking place, and that they're made aware of not only the time, but also the agenda? Like, for the agenda today, didn't have any out there. I finally did get a copy of some of what you all are gonna be discussing today. But the accessibility is critically important for everyone to be able to access. Thank you.
Thank you. And the live stream is working again. Thank you back there.
And now we have Unique Clay, 5899 Graywood Circle, and I'm not aware of the district number. Okay, that's all the cards I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. With that, we will move to item seven, which is the...
Oh, hold on.
I didn't recognize my own name, sorry. My name is Patricia Hay, I come from District Four. I've been to many council meetings, as has he, maybe not as many, but quite a few. I missed two or three, and I kind of echo that lady that said they need to get the word out better, because sometimes I miss because of that, or a conflict, or whatever. But what I wanted to talk about was I've been seeing a pattern develop in the Mablehood City Council meetings that I don't like. I've been seeing three council members who are trying to be physically responsible, and they get outvoted by the mayor and three other council members. I'm also standing up to speak in support of Patricia Alts. She has been transparent, measured, and thoughtful in her representation of her constituents and the whole town of Mableton. I, when I see politicians saying they are doing something for the people, I have to question that, because I don't think, I kind of wonder if they're really doing it for the people, you know? And at our last meeting, it was brought up what the people want, and I would say that the top three things, or at least my top three things, we want you to be physically responsible, we want you to be transparent, and we want you to be honest, okay? That's all we want, you know? I mean, I think it's fairly simple. Thank you.
Okay, I apologize, I oversighted that one. Thank you. I don't have any more, unless Mr. Clay is still here. Okay, that's all.
Okay. All right, with that said, we will move to item seven, which is the public hearing component. Before we open the floor to public hearing, there is a spending plan presentation that we would like to go through to ensure everyone has an idea of what, at a high level, what constitutes this plan, so. All right, so what we're gonna do here is go through this spending plan. I want to preface it with a couple of things. Number one is that the City of Mableton, as a whole, as a council as a body, has worked diligently hard to get us to the point where we are today, from June 1st till today, as a five-month-old city now, that we are working through the basic building blocks of standing up a city. You know, some of you may have heard me before talk about the three phases that we're gonna go through, through this two-year transition period. Now, the charter itself was clear in many ways in understanding the challenge that we were gonna have with starting a new city. There's provisions throughout the charter that gives us, that gives us leeway within these first two years in standing up this government and doing the things necessary that we know we're gonna that we know we're gonna have to be able to do. And one of those things was the, the actual setting of fiscal calendar and the actual budget, if you will, for the city. And I know I've heard many people that said that, you know, we, we have to know what's going on, we have to be transparent, we have to understand about where money is coming from and where the money is going to. Um, and that in large part is the reason why this spending plan exists. We understand the goals of fiscal responsibility very clearly. We understand the need to be transparent, open, and honest and direct with you about where our money is coming from, and as constituents, where that money is going to. So, in light of what we're putting together in this spending plan, even in the charter itself, it did say that the city shall, not may, or must, the city shall or city may, put together a budget and a spending plan. Now, it'd been very easy to go, well, we don't have to do one right now because of the, these, we're still very early on, some of the timing of the funds aren't very clear yet, the expenditures, we, we don't have any departments truly set up yet, so it's really hard to nail down what a budget would look like. And if you studied any other cities, you will know most cities take six full months to even put together a budget, and that is with existing departments and everything in place. So what we've done with the spending plan is, uh, we've laid out an indication of what these next six months would look like as we start to move the city forward. And, um, some of you that was, that had seen our last council meeting or here, uh, may, this may be echoing for some of you, but I wanted to make sure I kind of said this again so everyone would clearly understand. So this spending plan as it exists, um, will cover us to June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. So we're basically talking about from now until twenty, June twenty twenty-four, which is roughly six months, okay? During that timeframe, in June, I mean, sorry, in January of, of next year, we will start our six-month actual budget, budget cycle. So in July of twenty twenty-four, we will have a full budget that will go for the entire year. Uh, what we attempt to do now, again, is to, to share with you where we are now. And we actually started that with the first phase, um, a few weeks ago on October twenty-sixth, when we had a presentation of the year-to-date spending. For those of you that, that were not here or didn't get that information, uh, we did a recap on how much money the city has brought in, which is approximately one point four million dollars, and the expenditures that had gone out, um, and that was about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So that leaves us with about one point three million dollars fiscally clear in the bank. Uh, the vast majority of that one point, or, or, sorry, the vast majority of that hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, or a hundred and thirty thousand, a hundred and twenty-one of that was in salary. Because the first six months of this city's existence, the first five months, um, myself, none of the council or staff was paid anything. So, um, we worked to get a payroll system stood up in place and to make sure people got paid the other expenses, where our, our laptops and some expenses and other, other things. So as you can tell, literally from starting off right now, um, one point four coming in, coming in, a hundred and thirty thousand going out, one point three in the bank, we are fiscally sound and solid at this point. So the second phase of that was to, uh, deliver a, a project income expense, which we have done. Tonight, what we're doing is, uh, so last, last week at the meeting, kinda gave an overview on that projected income and expense, what this would cover. Tonight at this meeting, November ninth, we're doing a presentation of the, of the spending plan itself and allowing feedback from, uh, you as citizens to be able to comment on that. The final and, and fourth phase of this will be on November thirtieth. That will be, um, in a couple of more weeks after we'll be able to get feedback from the citizens about the spending plan, to be able to confer with the council and staff more, and then on November thirtieth, the plan is to come back together at a council meeting and hopefully be able to approve the spending plan. So again, we wanted to make sure that we were thorough with this. We gave plenty of time, over a month, to kinda go through from the beginning to end with this, uh, to ensure that everyone has input, uh, again, from the community council as well. This plan, in its instance, um, is strongly considered as an organic growth plan for the city, as well as departments, the personnel, and the services. With that being said, um, we're not looking at going out and going into debt, basically, right? And having to borrow money to build, to build the city. We're doing it organically. As we get money coming in, that money will go out in, in forms of services and staff. We're very keen to do that, that was very intentional. Um, I know that other cities have taken other routes and have gone in their very first year and leveraged millage rates on the citizens, also have, have taken on loans in the first year. Those were two things that we ultimately decided not to do. All of you are keenly aware that your property taxes did not go up one cent because of the city's creation, nor, nor did the city spend money to go out and get loans for everything we entitled to. Yes, some of you may have seen your property taxes go up, but as we all know now very clearly, that was because your value of your homes went up, was not because of the city. So, um, this plan also includes key leadership staff, including a city clerk, which we have, city manager, finance director, H.R. director, community development director, and I.T. directors. These are all staff members that we plan on be- bringing on board. Uh, if you were here at the, the last couple of meetings, we talked about our spending, our, our employee compens- compensation, uh, schedule, which basically laid out how much money we were going to anticipate to pay these specific roles, and again, in keeping us competitive with, uh, our surrounding markets and ensuring that we can go out and hire some of the best talent we can to join our, our existing staff and help in us moving forward. Uh, the plan also includes, uh, the plan also includes, uh, three code enforcement officers and two building inspectors, uh, in addition to various other roles, and also includes the purchase of vehicles for city use. There was some discussion before about, about code enforcement officers specifically, uh, about how many code enforcement officers in the city currently, how many we need that the county's having, but again, I urge you to remember that this is a six-month plan. So the goal is if we can get three code enforcement officers, uh, at least by June, that sets us very well going forward into the next year when we can look to potentially add more. Uh, there is over two hundred thousand dollars of funds set aside for a comprehensive plan. That is part of the overall planning for the city. There's a portion of that, again, because this only runs through, uh, June of next year, comprehensive plans for city, uh, typically takes somewhere between nine and twelve months to actually create. Um, it is our goal that whoever we select for a comprehensive plan, we can go forward in a graduated pay schedule, so we're not paying out the whole amount. Therefore, you'll only see a little bit over two hundred thousand allocated, uh, to this. However, with that said, comp plans can range from three hundred thousand all the way up to half a million, depending on, uh, the, the detail and, and what we look for in that plan. Uh, there's also contingency funds in this plan as well, sorry for not moving that forward. There's also contingency plans in, uh, for professional services and outsourcing, uh, specific efforts as necessary. Uh, with that being said, again, our goal is to hire and build and grow organically, but we do understand that in order to deliver the highest quality level of services, we, there may be opportunities in times where we need to bring in experts, it, it very skilled at what they do to be able to help us move forward and deliver the best-in-class services. So we want to make sure that there are some contingencies in there for that. This plan also includes all the hardware, software, and computing, computing items that will need to support the, the, uh, city throughout duration of spending plan and beyond. The reason we're saying beyond, of course, because we're gonna be allocating, uh, software and hardware assets that will go beyond the length of time of the spending plan. Uh, one thing to note too, that throughout, in the spending plan, we get to technology portion, uh, you'll see the technology areas is, is, um, has incorporated the technology for all the different departments, so you won't see technology broken in other departments. At this point in time, we want to keep it, uh, all within the technology area for all the I.T. spending that may, you may see. Um, as mentioned before, there will be, uh, planned for five to six vehicles that will be focused, uh, to be in use for mainly the members of the Community Development Department, again, code enforcement officers and, um, and building inspectors. The plan also includes, uh, interim office space. We have, um, as many of you know, office space is kinda hard to come by in the City of Mableton, but we do understand that as we start to deliver services, uh, while our goal is to keep almost all of the services online, so it'll be available twenty-four hours, twenty-four by seven to you at any time, there are people that may not have access to computers, although we just heard you can go to the library and, uh, make sure you can get one if necessary, but we did want to en- ensure that we include interim office space. Now, some of you may look and see that as, um, make sure you see that here. Looks like it's cut off a little maybe, yeah. Um, sorry, so the office spaces, um, we equated three thousand square feet, calculated twenty-eight dollars per square foot. Twenty-eight dollars per square foot is pretty high for the Mableton area, and we know that. Um, but we wanted to have options open and ensure, rest assured that we will, we will look for, uh, affordable and efficient space, but again, space within Mableton for offices is quite limited. Um, we also included funds there for potential build-out if we needed to, uh, as well as furniture and outlays, uh, for the office itself. So as it relates to the overall spending plan, the highlights, you'll see here, over here on the left, is the, is the, uh, resources, I'm sorry, sorry, is the revenue sources, uh, and, and they're really kinda small. I mean, in, in the full spreadsheet, you see there's a lot more listed, but the reality of it is, our, our resources for revenue really comes from just a few areas. Um, obviously the taxes, which, uh, really is around our hotel motel tax, insurance premiums, and, um, and the occupational business tax. Uh, licensing and permitting, once we get that department up, you'll see revenue coming from there, and then obviously interest off the revenues that we have in the bank, totaling three point seven eight mil- million dollars. On the expenditure side, uh, it's, it's a little more lengthy, starts off with the governing body, which is the mayor and, uh, council and, and our office, and goes to the city administrator, which is the city manager, the office of the clerk, finance office, legal office, uh, code enforcement, technology services, human resources, community development, and building services. A lot of times you will see, um, you will see code enforcement and building services underneath community development, and as we go forward, you will probably see them more collapse into one department, but for, for clarity's purposes here, we wanted to show them as separate entities so you could have a better idea of where that spend was going. So, um, so if you look very simply at the numbers that we have, from three point seven eight million on one side to three point four eight, that leaves us with a surplus of three hundred and nine thousand dollars that can be used for contingency or in reserves. So on the proposed revenue side, to break that down, uh, we did go through each, again, each one of those, you could see exactly where those funds are coming from and how they're broken out, and the basic percentages of those. Uh, the first one is really simple, it's, uh, hotel motel tax revenue, uh, a hundred and two dollars, I mean, a hundred and seven thousand, a hundred and two thousand dollars and seven hundred. That, um, is showing up just one blob there because right now, that hotel motel, uh, tax comes from only seven entities right now, or, not, sorry, nine entities down to eight entities at this current moment. Uh, it's projected a hundred and two thousand dollars, that's a, that's a little less than what it's been tracking throughout, uh, the last five years in the county. Um, this number has been higher, um, but again, we're gonna keep it at a hundred and two. One reason that I still showed this, this graph here is that, uh, right now, it's, it's a single entity, it's just hotel motel. However, if you recall back from our ordinance that we, that we passed, the hotel motel tax is actually a lodging tax, so there are other elements that are included in there, which number one is short-term rentals. So short-term rentals right now are not, uh, within the guise, has not been within the guise of, of the county. County has not been administering that. We will, um, in due time, so you will see hotel motel taxes. There's also campgrounds and other short-term rentals that potentially could come into scope. Uh, right now though, however, it's just the hotel motel tax. Um, but hopefully we will see that diversify here in the future. The next one's more, is a more general tax revenue base that you'll see here is the three point five million dollars. Uh, the largest category that, and was actually our first, uh, first revenue that the city saw, was the, uh, ad valorem tax. That is basically when someone buys or sells a vehicle within the City of Mableton, um, those fees and funds for that now go to the city instead of the county. Technically, it still goes to the county because we go through the county to administer that in Department of, of Revenue, but again, that money comes to us in the form of a check every month from the county. So you can see here, that's about two, a little over two million dollars, uh, that we're projecting for that. Um, uh, other smaller ones you'll see there, you'll notice the franchise fees, which has, uh, been a vital discussion, is around four hundred thousand dollars. Again, as we, as we, um, nail down other franchise agreements, you will see that number go up, but, um, again, based on the contracts we have right now, that's where we are. Business and occupational tax, we talked a lot about last meeting, uh, which we have an ordinance up for now under review, uh, that occupational tax, again, at a six-month period, is marked at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Again, we think that's quite conservative. I, I truly believe that, uh, that there are, well, let's just say, as we move forward with the city and the city is proactively ensuring that we are, uh, working with our business community to ensure that everyone is being represented correctly, that, uh, there's an opportunity to capture more funds there. Obviously, the insurance premiums come in at five, five hundred thousand dollars, uh, that is a, I think, once-a-year payment that we get that comes in through the state, uh, that's not a county transfer, that's literally working with the state for that. We have already passed that as part of one of our ordinances, and we'll be working directly with the state to secure that. So as we go to the next slide, this is licensing and permit revenue. As you can see, this revenue is not as large as a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, but this also assumes the fact that we are gonna be, again, organically building into being able to take these services on. This is not anything that we are currently doing right now, so we understand we have to build up the capacity and bring people on board to where we're able to start being able to see some of the, uh, revenue that comes from our licensing permits. But within that, you'll see the different types of, of permitting and fees that usually go along with that. Um, these are, these are pretty typical, and we didn't change these much from what Cobb County, uh, issues as far as what the fees are for the different types of permits. Uh, we may have at liberty to make some of those changes if necessary for the different types of fees, but for the most part, we don't want to surprise anyone, we want to make sure that the fees stay as consistent with Cobb County as they are right now. Um, and again, I don't think any of these are actually new or will be new. The film and motion, uh, motion pitcher permits on there, uh, is, is something that's new. I think we've only allocated five hundred dollars for that. There's a parade and race events listed at a thousand dollars, and, uh, yard sale permits, which a lot of people aren't always aware of, but there is sometimes small permit fees that come along with that. So, um, on the spending side, so on the spending side overall, this is, um, it's a little more to this side, it's four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, that is the cost of, uh, basically the mayor and council's office, includes all of our, uh, inch, uh, I'm sorry, all of the actual, uh, pay along with that, as, as well as the purchases. There is professional services that are, that is in there as well, uh, as well as some initial fundings for do some outreach. Some of the outreach will be, uh, community programming, community outreach. Again, there's been questions about, we're wanting to make sure more people know when meetings are and what's happening. We don't have an actual comm staff, so I want to make sure that we are including that so we can get more information and more messaging out, so we have that in there as well as part of that. And then, so, um, ancillary supplies being a, a part of that as well. Next one, you see city administrator, again, this will be the office of the city manager. Uh, the personnel services around that, our personal services is about twenty-five percent. Uh, that includes the salary and, and, uh, and benefits of a city manager. Again, we talked about, as we go through each one of these, I broke out what those costs are for the actual personnel, uh, that we'd be hiring, and then other services around that. You'll see, um, in the second area there, the purchasing contracted services around that, there's a couple of things listed there. Um, there is professional services that are listed there as well, to give the city manager the ability to be able to, uh, reach out for specific, uh, and, and bring on specific short-term, uh, talent as necessary on an S.O.W. basis to be able to do that. Uh, there's, there's also grant expenditures in there, as well as community outreach. There's also thirty thousand dollars specifically that was listed for Mableton beautification. Um, again, it's something that we want to put in there early so we could start brainstorming around what some of those things we were gonna do. We already received some public, uh, comment, as a matter of fact, already, uh, around keep, keep Cobb beautiful, keep Mableton beautiful, it's something we've talked about before, we want to make sure we get a start on, um, so that's gonna be an effort that's gonna be funded early on and have a lot of ideas about what it's gonna do to start making the city, uh, really truly look beautiful. And I think some of the other supplies are, are, supplies are there, and then machine and equipment, there's a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars there, that again is earmarked for the interim office, uh, to be rented, built out, and furnished. Um, again, that's, and that's upfront cost, obviously, through the six months, but whatever, uh, whatever rental and, um, fees for furniture and, and whatnot, we'll cover on beyond that. So next one is the city clerk. Uh, this is probably the only, uh, pseudo-office where we have someone in, is Miss Susan Hyatt that's here and was instrumental in helping with this as well. Um, and so you can see here with the, the personal services around that is roughly half of the office, with the, mostly the other half going towards a purchase of contracting, uh, services. That too- That, too, has a couple of unique items there. We want to make sure that we are abiding by the law and ensuring that we are codifying everything that we're doing. Right now, our clerk is ensuring that all the documents, the resolutions, ordinances, and everything are being kept, again, per Georgia state law. We want to make sure that she has the tools and, and systems necessary to be able to do that. So most of that is in that $63,000, as well as education and training that goes along with that role. The next item is finance. We'll see that finance is overall $266,000 office, with about 17% of that going towards a finance consultant. We have been thankful to have Frank Malazi as our interim finance consultant, but as time goes on, we will hire an actual CFO for the city that will help us navigate these items going forward. Along with that, there is a substantial amount of funds within the purchase and contract services, and one of the biggest items for that is audits. Again, speaking to the transparency of what we want to do, we want to ensure that our city finances are able to be audited on a regular basis as any other entity would be, so we put that, we put those funds in here right off the bat. There is, and I'll be remiss if I did not speak to this number here because it's, it actually shows that right now is, is a pretty large number. The $31,000 for bank fees is, as Frank has said himself, is pretty, quite certain that that's more than what we will have. We've only had about seven, $600, $700 over the, over the last three to four months where we had a bank account. So there's not expectation for it to be at $31,000, but we wanted to ensure that regardless of what we try to do from a banking perspective, that there would be funds to cover that. So the next item is legal. So legal's a little bit different because what we've decided to do as a city from day one is to bring on Amelia as our, as our interim legal counsel. She obviously is a partner with a firm, so it's not an in-house finance, sorry, not an in-house legal representation that we have. Our expectation is we will keep it that way, we'll continue to leverage outside counsel, I'm sorry, we'll leverage a partnering company to provide city counsel for us. One of the largest reasons being is that it's a single-line item, and when dealing with a firm, you not only have the, the actual attorney, but you have leverage to reach inside that firm when necessary. The other item here that we pulled out, what you see right now, is about 25%, or $125,000 of that is actually outside counsel. It's no secret to anyone that we are in the midst of a lawsuit, so we retain outside counsel to be able to do that. Those are funds to date, as well as projected costs throughout June 30th, as things stand right now. And I'm not going to go into specifics of the case, but as things stand right now with the, with the, with the funds that we've already been assessed by the outside counsel, and then with the money that we expect to spend on a level rate going through June, this is what that cost may be. However, I have to tell you, that is a highly anticipated number that is just based on what we've seen right now. If something different happens with litigation, that number could change significantly. All right, next item we have is code enforcement. This is a $431,000 budgeted office. I do want to preface this by saying code enforcement is one of those areas where we will have to build a staff and build up to be able to do it. It's obviously one of those areas where we've heard consistently, time and time again, one of the reasons to become a city is that people really, really want to see a code enforcement office stood up. So with this, again, as I mentioned before, code enforcement office, the expectation is that throughout the six-month period, there will be three code enforcement officers hired, along with that $184,000 for their salary and benefits. The $112,000 for purchasing and contract services is what's going to handle everything that they're going to need to do their job, minus the supplies, which actually is the gas, whatever maintenance they're going to need, uniforms, and those type things. The last item there was actually $121,000, and the vast majority of that is the space that they would need, as well as the vehicles for the code enforcement officers. Next item is our technology services. As I mentioned before, it's a $400,000 office. The goal right now is to keep all of our IT elements contained within one office. So any software, any computer purchasing, anything like that, we'll keep within the technology services office for now. Technology is, is one of those key areas for us, I will say, as a, as a new city, the newest city in the state of Georgia. We are quickly becoming the envy of every other city. And I say that within the context of this, is that we get to start fresh from day one with leveraging technology in this city. So one of the, one of the pure advantages we have over not being, you know, 50, 60, or 100 years old, is that we get to start off with technology brand-new, and what that allows us to do is be very effective and efficient in what we're able to do. That's going to mean a lot to our residents when they're able to go online and get information and fill out, fill out different types of applications or notifications, they're going to be able to sign up for that, report problems, issues what's going on, be able to track those all the way through, as well as being able to be in contact with myself, the council, and staff. So that being said, we've, we've tucked quite a bit into here to make sure that, you know, all of our devices, all of our training, all the cybersecurity software, our data vaulting, which is what allows us to, to control and identify all of the communications that go on within the city, but also directly between the citizens of, citizen of the city and the city itself, that we're going to ensure that all of that is captured, and we will be able to have that. So that's about $289,000. Again, we, that's a projected amount, we may not spend all that. Some of that will be determined on how many of these systems that we actually get up and get in place over the next six months. So moving forward, we have the office of human resources. This is pretty straightforward with this one, $136,000 for an HR director, $33,000 to help get those services up and going, and about $5,200 in supplies. So the next is community, sorry. Lilly, can you help? Clicker stopped working? I turned it off and turned it back on. Help this. Restart it, please. All right, next up, community development. It's 400, roughly $400,000 office. Within this, if you remember, will be the, starting off from a personal services, we were looking at bringing on a community development director and a business license specialist. Again, the community development director kind of housed all of this, and then being very specific about making a hire for a business, a business license specialist that can help us get that up off the ground with our hotel motel, alcohol, business licenses, and the like. $277,000 of that is, is in training and the normal ancillary figures that go into that. We did have some contract labor and some contingency in that. Again, if we need to bring in outside, outside resources to be able to stand this office up with the level of quality that you all deserve, within the amount of time that we need, we left contingencies in there for contract labor, as well as contingencies to bring on outside, outside help for that as well. The other items around that is supplies and, and equipment necessary. Last item that we have is the building inspection. Building inspection, $331,000. Again, I think, as you've seen before from our, our revenue side, you know, code enforcement, community development, and building inspection are some of our larger monetary offices, $431,000, $413,000, and building inspection services, $331,000 respectively. But those are the, are the direct offices, departments that were responsible for bringing in funds for the city. So with that, you will see two inspectors, two inspectors or building inspectors in that vein, within that $120,000 for that amount. You will see purchasing the $113,000, and then the supplies of $15,000 in machinery, which basically is around the vehicles, for, for those two vehicles, for those men or women, at $82,000. So what I have attempted to share with you tonight is an overall proposed spending plan that is encompassing of those next six months, things that we are looking at being able to spend, as well as projected revenues that will be coming in across multiple different departments. We have already begun to take your input in, again, those that continue to come and email us and call us about things that they want to see. I have to highlight again, this is something that we have put together based on information that we have now. These actual could come in and look quite different as anyone who's ever put together a budget, but we believe that it is sound, it is thoughtful, it is transparent, and it is fiscally responsible. So with that, I will stop talking, I will take a seat, and then we will open up the, the comment portion of this public hearing. So thank you all. So Madam Clerk, Madam Attorney, if you guys would mind walking through the logistics of the public hearing, and then we will get started.
Okay, so this portion of the meeting, we actually get to hear public comments, so I think, Mayor, we're allocating, is it 20 minutes?
30 minutes.
30 minutes, okay. So there's 20, there's 30 minutes that's going to be allocated to, to the public hearing. I would just ask you to remember that public hearing is not a question-and-answer session, it's just more of an opportunity for us to just get feedback from the people who this is going to most directly impact, to hear your comments, I'll be taking notes as you talk. It gives the mayor and council the ability to hear your comments, as well as your neighbor, and just the, the public in general. We would just ask that you don't attack anyone, or interrogate anyone, or boo anyone for their opinion. And I know that sometimes things, people are passionate about certain issues, and it's hard to, to not do that, but we would just ask that you remain courteous and respectful to whoever talks, no matter what their opinion is, because regardless of whether we like someone's opinion or not, it's, the part of democracy is actually listening and hearing and considering what they're saying. So we would just ask that you give everyone in here that level of respect. We would also ask that you just keep your comments to a reasonable timeframe. We will, we have extended comments beyond the two-minute mark, but we will have a timer that goes off if you go over four minutes. And that's just because we want the maximum amount of people as possible to be able to comment, and we want to hear the maximum amount of people as possible without keeping you here until midnight. So with that said, if you have public comment and you'd like to speak, if you could line up against that back wall, just line up, and then when you come to the podium, when you go to the, when you come to the podium, if you could go to, yeah, if you could go to that podium and line up, because I think that wall will be easier to line up against because there's less
Okay.
... equipment and cords against that wall. So when you come to the podium, if you could state your name and your district, and then just give the public and the council your comments, your thoughts, suggestions on, on the spending plan.
Thank you, Madam Attorney.
Yeah, and you can start, sorry.
Yeah, come on, approach, please.
Afternoon, evening.
Evening, morning. It all runs together, so I get it.
It's morning somewhere.
I had to write a statement because if not, my ADHD, ABC, 1, 2, 3, elemental P is going to kick in. So here you go, and I'm very nervous, but as a longtime resident, and a proud business owner here in Mableton for nearly three decades, how is that when I'm only turning 21 next year? But I stand here before you today with a vested interest in our community's prosperity. While I initially had reservations about the establishment of Mableton as a city, I now wholeheartedly support its growth and development. Success requires resources and our city's ability to operate effectively with sustainable revenue. As we move forward, I expect that my business taxes earned through hard work will directly benefit a place that I call home. It is my sincere, oh, excuse me. It is my sincere, excuse me, success requires. I'm so sorry. As we move forward, I'm sorry. Let us work together, how about that? Let us work together to ensure that our loco tax dollars stay loco, supporting the vibrant future here in Mableton. I urge you to consider your long, these long-time discussions that we've been having for over months. These decisions are going to impact us for years to come. So please prioritize the interests of our citizens. To Mayor Dr. Owens, I fully support this plan. I know how hard it is to start a business, and we're here trying to start a city. I think this is a great start. We've only been a city for, what, five months? This staff, the mayor, his counsel, and the staff worked five months without pay. Would you do that? Could you do that? What has been done in this short time is nothing short, but amazing. I want to thank you all for your commitment and your time to serving our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was definitely a tough act to follow. I am definitely not going to be that eloquent, I guarantee that. Minds are more of a technical nature. One, just making sure, and this is comments that could be questions but don't need to be addressed at this moment, just regarding the transparency of what all was shared here, it was a lot to digest. But I also want to just make a comment of the thoughtfulness that clearly you put forth, to putting forth this spending plan, with noting that if we stick the landing, so to speak, on certain things, some of the expenditures will go down, and then there will be even more cost savings for the city. So that's another thing to note, because it doesn't always have to stay up here, but we got a surplus, so that's, that's, that's a first win in my book. But regarding the presentation, would love for this to be somehow distilled to everyone and make it available, because there was a lot of insightful information about the breakdowns, stuff like that. We'll be looking at the recordings and sharing it. Full disclosure, I'm in charge of a fairly small civic group here, and I want to make sure that they're getting their just due, because there's a lot of folks that would like to come to the meeting that can't, and is probably just excited about the standing up of a new city, as I am. And that's pretty much it. I wanted to keep it short and sweet, yeah. So I didn't have a prepared statement. Thank you.
Would you mind stating your name?
Oh, sorry.
District, organization?
Oh, sure. My name's Sam Colbreth. I am the current chairman of the
Monica Delancey, Riverside Community, District 2. First, I would like to, again, you don't have to answer now, but please put your notes. South Cobb Redevelopment Authority, where does that lie? The South Cobb Redevelopment Authority is a fully established authority, pretty much oversees the boundaries from the Mableton community, preferably the Six Flags Task District, so I don't see that nowhere in your report, so we need to know what happens with that. Majority of the funds that is given to the Six Flags Task District come from commercial property, and 15 of that commercial properties are apartment complexes, so we need to make sure we line item that and say what's going on with those funds, okay? In addition to that, I do want to emphasize, I see the importance of having, keep Mableton beautiful. Barry Krebs does such a wonderful job with that, I'm so glad that you are doing that. Clap, 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 clap for that, clap, clap, right? Because that is of utmost importance. Also, since you see that's important, we need a line item to address what's going on with how many black families will be affected because of this rental crisis we have, the eviction crisis. So we need to line item that as well, because again, Cobb County is going to see a high rate of evictions coming in January 2024, and most of it would be black families from the city limits of Mableton, okay? And that's because of the high number of not only apartment complexes, but individual homes that are rented, okay? So therefore, we're going to have to start strong, the importance of addressing that as well, and how it will affect our families, our children. Our children that attend City View Elementary School, that attend Riverside Elementary School, their transit rate before COVID was at 40%, and now that we are, after COVID is dwindling down, the transit rate is going to be beyond 50%. And let me just say, the reason being, Riverside used to be two schools. We had Riverside Intermediate, which was second through fifth grade, and then we had Riverside Primary, Riverside Primary was kindergarten to second grade, and then first grade, and the Riverside Intermediate was first grade, I mean, second grade to fifth grade. So because it was the same school, if a student moved across the street, they still was going to the same school, right? But now that it's two individual schools, City View is K through 5, Riverside is K through 5, the child moves across the street, you have to go to a different school. So that's what's going to make that transit rate be beyond 50%, if you will, and that does impact children learning, that impacts families, okay? And so if you care about our families, you care about our children, you include that in your report as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Arnetta Cameron, I live in District 3. Do not want your job, but I think you're doing a wonderful job. I really enjoyed the presentation. I just wanted to second the motion for the fact that I am, I'm not plugged in, I'm unaware. I was so excited about Mableton becoming a city, and yet I have no information once we've finally become a city. I too found out about this meeting because Unique Clay, who is a force in our community, and Walden Crossing, let everyone know about it. So that's how I got here. I travel for work a lot, I have a small consulting firm, I work out of state a lot, I want to bring my business home, I've been trying to do business with Cobb County, not going very well, so I'm hopeful that there will be an opportunity for me to bring my consulting and coaching services to Mableton where I live. Eager to find out more information. I was hoping at the end of the presentation, there would be some information on how to get in touch with you guys, or how to keep in the know, so to speak. I won't make every meeting, I'm too busy, but I will definitely pull it up on my laptop and listen while I'm working. So if we could just get more information out, I would love to be plugged in. I'm very passionate about Mableton, my husband and I have been in this area a very long time. We left findings from Mableton back when they were sleeping on us, quite frankly, so I stand on that, they slept on Mableton, and now we have an opportunity to show them what they slept on. I think these guys are doing a great job laying the foundation for that, and it's going to be beautiful, it's going to be what we make it. So the best thing for us to do is support them, as you can clearly see, they have our best interests at heart, and it's going to take communication. I know there's a lot of passion in the room about it, but it's going to take clear communication and an open mind for it to be what it could be for all of us. So I want to be a part of that, and I'm hoping for some information on how to get plugged in with you guys tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'll make sure I get the time right. Good evening. My name is Don Teck Philpott, I'm in District 1, hello, Councilman Davis. So I guess, and I'm with Ossale Community Task Force, I am the Community Development Chair. The first thing that I would say is thank you to each and every last one of you for all of the hard work and dedication that went into just putting this together for us to view tonight. I understand very intimately that budgets are not your best friend, and so I appreciate it, I think the community appreciates it. Just a couple of quick things, and again, it's not necessarily for you to answer tonight, but just to kind of chew on for later on. I noticed that franchise fees were on there, and I think there's a great opportunity for this council to really explain franchise fees to the community. I know that there has been a lot of misinformation and disinformation out there, I won't say we're next door, but there's a lot of disinformation out there, and I think that this is especially with the budget coming up, or you guys trying to finalize it, it's a great opportunity for people to understand where that revenue source, or what that revenue source is, and the, not necessarily the intricacies of it, but what the truth of the matter is, as opposed to continuing to hear all the wrong things about franchise fees. The second piece, we, just like you said, it's no secret that there's current litigation going on. I don't know if there's been conversation, maybe there has, maybe there hasn't, but as a community stakeholder, I would love for you guys to explore some type of way to recoup those legal fees that the city is incurring from this litigation. Let's say, for example, in the event that the city comes out on the winning side, hey, can we recoup all of the legal fees, or some of the legal fees, to kind of take the brunt off of the community's shoulders, because ultimately, the city and the residents are paying at least a part of those legal fees. The last thing, there were different sections where vehicles were brought up for different departments. Hopefully, we can look for cost savings there, I don't know if the idea's been floated that we're going to look for brand-new vehicles, or gently-used, or used vehicles, if there's what kind of amortization schedule we're taking, five years, 10 years, whatever, so we can recognize those tax savings, but hopefully, if they don't have to be brand-new, that would be great, if they're very slightly gently-used, that would be wonderful, but any way that we can kind of shave something off to where we don't hit that max dollar amount that's in the budget, that would be absolutely great. But thank you again to each and every last one of you, you guys are doing a great job, and we are here to support you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Michael Murphy, I'm in District 4, and I would add, with the comments of the previous speakers, as it relates to the work that's been done, the budget. The beauty of it for me is that I'm a big advocate for zero-based budgeting, and this is it, in the purest form, so we had better enjoy it while we have it. I would like to add my comments to a previous speaker as it relates to, to make sure that we take advantage of all the revenue potential that is out there. And frankly, there are those of us in this room who for a long time have been involved in the development of Magnolia Crossing. I don't know anywhere else where 50 acres would be in a community, and the only thing, as I've said before, that's growing on it are the weeds. I think that is a tremendous opportunity for this city to look at, and I know that it is currently under the auspices of the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority, but I've long felt that, and there have been development plans and so forth, but that certainly is, for lack of a better term, a diamond in the rough. Secondly, I would urge that you look at the advantages of being a city as part of a land bank authority. I have endlessly been trying to get the Cobb County to at least bring it to a work session to discuss, and let me point out to everyone here that it isn't fair to expect a home run overnight. They're doing their homework, it is incumbent upon us to do our homework as well. So when you hear ideas, do your own due diligence, and I encourage you, same way as it relates to land banks. For whatever reason, the county decided to implement a blight tax, and to my knowledge, I've never seen a report as how effective it's been, but I can certainly tell you, there are numerous examples of the advantages and successes of land banks. At some point, I know you'll be assessing the land availability that exists in this city, and that is potential revenue for sure. And last but not least, I hope in the plans that you're not looking to pay a consultant to do our city seal. I want to speak on the advantage of utilizing a lot of the talent that we have right within this city, and I can tell you, I would bet you that if you were to host a contest with a graphic art students, Pebblebrook or South Cobb or what have you, I think you would be amazed at what you would come back with, with the renderings, and I think the advantage is that we would end up with a city seal that would make us all proud. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Patricia Hay, and I'm from District 4, and I have a couple of questions, and I know I'm not supposed to ask questions, but I'm wondering about the retirement for the employees, does that mean pensions? And also, are we reimbursing the city, the county, Cobb County, for the elections? I'm not sure where that went, or how that went down, I was just curious, because I didn't see that on there. So just a couple of things, just questions I have, I know you're not going to answer them, but that's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Go ahead.
We are not reimbursing the county for the elections.
Yeah, Ben Williams, District 5, and I took a chance following Mike Murphy. So I don't have to address a number of the things that he brought before us, but what I do want to say, and I am absolutely accountable for my remarks, this is a startup corporation. It has no history. The surplus for a startup is puny. And I appreciate the board's effort in terms of trying to put something before us that obviously they have reasoned would be acceptable, but I would hope that those of us at least gathered in this room would stand at the ready, should in fact the tight glove that they've put on their hands in order to operate, if the fingers begin to burst, okay? So I commend you for putting together a really tough-minded budget, but I'm also familiar with the unexpected things that will arrive in a startup enterprise, and I've worked with some large corporations before, so I know of that about which I speak. So all I'm saying, that as we applaud them tonight for coming forth with a document that at least makes us comfortable to move forward, I would ask that we be equally ready when in fact there are some twists and turns in the road, because there is no experience out in front of them in terms of putting this kind of thing together, okay? So kudos to you, job well done, and Michael, I'll always try to follow you, because if you can give voice to what's on my head, it takes it off my shoulders, okay?
Thank you, Dr. Williams.
My name's Michael King, and I think I live in District 3, I'm still getting familiar with the district structure. This is my first meeting that I'm attending, and I was completely opposed to the notion of a city, I'll preface my statements with that. That being said, having come to the meeting, having listened to your statements, Mr. Mayor, I'm very pleased with what I see, I'm very impressed with what I see, I'm very impressed with the numbers and the statements and everything that I've seen come forth. I've lived in Mableton, in the Mableton area, almost 30 years now, so, you know, I've seen the area grow, and my wife and I have always described it as a diamond in the rough. I'm originally from Northern Indiana, and grew up in Gary, Indiana, and I'm familiar with the inner workings of that city, and what came about in that city, and I've seen the good and I've seen the bad as far as community development, as far as that's concerned. And what I can say is that I'm seeing here is, what I'm seeing here is good, and I'm impressed, and I'm looking forward to what comes out of this. Really, the only question that comes forth, and it may have been answered previously, but I think it's something that probably needs to be addressed, is dealing with code enforcement and pointing out the differences that Mableton will have versus the county, and making certain that that is apparent to the residents as far as that's concerned. That's going to be something that people are going to ask, especially those that are not familiar with what's going on. And then I'd also like to echo what other people have said about making the meetings more available, and making the timeframes more visible to those around. It took me until I think Monday of this week before I learned of this meeting, which is why I'm here. But again, my hat is off to all of you, you've got a hard job in front of you, and as a resident, if there's anything I can certainly do, you know, my door is open, my ears are open, I'm certainly willing to listen and learn. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name hasn't changed since the first time I spoke on this side. Okay, I was trying to keep it light, I'm glad everybody's laughing. Anyway, my name is Joyce Steele, I live in District 4, and I echo everything that's been said so far. And speaking to the council, thank you so much for investing your time and effort and energy into all that you've done so far. Thank you for the transparency that you've shown so far, it'd be great if we could continue to do that. Thank you that you allow folks to come up and speak whatever's on their hearts, or whatever's in their minds, even if everyone doesn't always agree with everything, the ability to at least express that is greatly appreciated, and we're thankful for that. And I, even before I asked this question, I'm probably going to say, why did you ask that question, but I am. How can we help? Okay, like, what can we as the community do to assist with what's going on? Because it's not only going to take you all giving us things to react to, but it's also going to take us as a community to step up to the plate, because they're not the only ones that have to do the work. You all have to do the work, I won't have to, but you all will, I'm just joking. Anyway, so what can we do to assist? And one more ques, one last question. You showed, when you first started, you showed an overview of the spending plan, you had a couple, it was like, you had, I think, two pages with that? Can you flip back to the first one, because by the time we saw that, you were kind of almost through with that, so. That one, just leave it there for a second. I'm done, but I just wanted to see.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1796.15]
Hello, everyone. I'm Cheryl Davis, District Five. If you know me, you know I don't like public speaking. But what I hear a lot, and I've come to most of these meetings, that people want, you know, more communication, more communication, more communication. They have a Facebook page that I'm sure this information is going out on, and I get emails from Ms. Susan about it. So if you can give her your email address, you'll get an email telling you about these things. So, and it's usually on Nextdoor and everything. And I try to share it. I put it on my HOA Facebook page, and I have a neighbor that I specifically email her. She still hasn't showed up yet. But she gets an email every time you guys have a meeting. So if you all just maybe get in contact with Ms. Susan. Hi, I'm the one that sends that email, says thank you. That'd be great. All right. And Mableton City, Mableton Facebook page. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else that would like to offer any comment? Thank you.
Ben Bailey, District Five. I'll be brief. One thing I didn't see in any of the budget plan was Parks and Recreation. And I know that the entire city government can't be stood up overnight, but I would at least like to see a footnote somewhere that says, this is where Parks and Recreation is going to fit in eventually.
Thank you for that. Anyone else? Anyone else with any comments, concerns, well wishes? Any other comment? This has been fantastic. I thank you all for getting up and speaking. We wanted specifically to have a public hearing tonight following this presentation. It is vitally important that we continue to get your feedback about what's going on, what we're doing. So with that being said, if we don't have any more public comment, I will go ahead and close the public hearing section of this by, again, thanking you all for taking the opportunity. Over these next couple of weeks, I hope that there's anticipation of us getting this out to you and having ways that anybody that wants to get it, to have it, as well as reaching out to your council person. Reason, we will continue to ask you, who is your council person, right? What district you live in? The reason we ask them is because we want you to be cognizant about who your council person is, to know what district you live in so that you can reach out to them. So again, over the next couple of weeks, you have questions, comments, you want to be able to provide feedback. We're giving you that opportunity. You can email the city directly, or you can email any of us on the council with what your specific comments or questions are as it relates to the plan. So with that said, hearing no other comment, no one else awaiting comment, we'll go ahead at this time and close public hearing for the transitional city plan. Thank you all. With that being said, we'll move on to item number eight, which is the old business, only one item of old business, which is a second read for the ordinance to amend Chapter Seven, Taxes, Fees and Assessments of the City of Mableton as it relates to the Code of Ordinances pertaining to occupational taxes. This item of occupational taxes, something that's came before us, it's a second read that's came before us a couple of times, and we have received some feedback from the community on this ordinance, so I'd like to thank you all for that. There's been feedback from the council. And at this point in time, Madam Attorney, if you would like to take a second and kind of give a recap on this ordinance, the particulars of it, and why it is in front of us today.
So Mayor, this is a continuation of the review of the occupation tax ordinance, and this is, this ordinance, this service, this collection is one of the services and collection of taxes that was anticipated by the feasibility study that provided the basis for the city's incorporation. It was anticipated that this would be a critical and essential item for the council to transfer and to rely on to have a successful transition. And that is why we are here today, transitioning this component of the city's code. And so we've had the opportunity to have the prior discussion on this, and this is occupation taxation and business licensing and the taxation collection. And I have had opportunity to review substantial feedback. I've been given feedback by council members. I've spoken to council members. And then we also had really, really good feedback. It's the, goodness, I can't remember her name, but I think she's with the
Ms. Myers.
Mableton Improvement Coalition. Robin?
Yes, Ms. Robin Myers.
Is that Robin? Yeah, so she, her coalition gave just substantial and really, really good feedback. I could tell that they paid great detail and attention to it. So I just, I always appreciate when I get community feedback because it prevents people just coming after the fact and screaming. So I try to take care of those concerns in advance, being proactive versus being reactive. So I was able to incorporate the feedback that they provided. And then also, I'll say with respect to Robin, she did share with me some of the historical challenges and concerns that she herself, as well as other residents, have had with enforcement. So I always appreciate that feedback because if there's been certain processes or difficulties that you faced in dealing with just the administration of certain processes previously, the whole goal is for, by incorporating, is for service to become better. And by you sharing that feedback, it just allows us to anticipate what businesses or anybody may do, particularly to your community, and then to be able to just craft the code in a way that anticipates that this might be a problem for this specific jurisdiction. So I always welcome and appreciate feedback of that caliber. So Mayor and Council, if you recall, at the 11-2 meeting where we first went over this ordinance, it was a lot longer. And it was longer in the sense that I wanted you to understand and comprehend what the county's code was with respect to this. Because we are substantially reliant on the county's code, because it's my recommendation, at least initially, that that is the most practical direction to take. And that's just because the community is familiar with the county's code as well as businesses. So it creates the less, it creates the least, just, you know, chaos with respect to transition because everyone kind of knows these processes. What I have since done is I have removed the regulatory components because I did listen to comments that were made. There were council and public comments just about wanting to make sure that this was digestible, manageable, that it was practical for your initial implementation. So I did remove substantial portions of the regulatory, of the regulatory components of this ordinance. And the good part is that the Mableton Charter, Section 715, subsection D, if you're interested, but it essentially states that the codes within Cobb County will remain enforceable by Cobb County through Cobb County's courts for the tenure of the transition period. So that means that even if you do not adopt those regulatory components, it doesn't mean that they don't exist. So these businesses, whether it's the spas, the pawn shops, just some of the things that were removed, they are still subject to Cobb County's Code of Ordinances. So the only way they would not be subject to those regulations would be for the county to remove those regulations, which I don't anticipate or foresee the county doing because it just wouldn't make practical sense. They have jurisdiction over a way larger area than just the city of Mableton, and I just don't anticipate those provisions being removed from the county's code during the transition period. So you do have the flexibility to make this more digestible and manageable, particularly since you were adopting this contemporaneous with the first major step towards the lifting of your administration, which is the hiring of employees, leased space, and the personnel protocols and plan that were put in place through your retreat in September, your conversations prior, and your council meetings up until this point. So I do plan to bring those items back to you because just keep in mind, you know, after the transition, you have to, if you don't have them in place, then your businesses won't be subject to those regulations. So any that are near and dear to you, they need to come in at least some point during the two-year transition. So I do plan to bring them back. And if there are particular ones that you want me to bring back sooner than later, just let me know. And if there's members of the public, if anyone else has any feedback to provide with respect to regulation, any recommendations, this is your opportunity. If you've dealt with the process, because right now we are incorporating the county process, but the goal is to make it better and to make it more usable by you and more friendly, more resident-friendly, more efficient. So if you have recommendations, if you've dealt with impediments or just any logistics issues with any of these processes, if you will give those, that feedback and comment in my drafting, I promise you I look at all the emails that are sent to me. I incorporate feedback. That's one reason why I said earlier, I really appreciate the Mableton Improvement Coalition for, you know, just taking the time to provide that feedback. So there's essentially three divisions to the current form, the current draft of the ordinance. There is a general provision section that incorporates the general requirements for that Cobb County had in place. So what I did is I went through their code and I extracted the general requirements, and I put those as Division One. And I've consolidated them, and I think that there are about 24, approximately 24. And then you have a second subsection that deals with special permits and licensing. And that is also incorporated from the county's code. And then you have a third subsection that deals with lawyers because lawyers are regulated by the State Bar of Georgia. So your ability to regulate lawyers similar to other businesses is just, it's restricted. So this incorporates those restrictions so that you are not regulating that practice in a way that's unlawful or unfair to just the legal profession. And I copied this verbatim from the county's code with the exception of when it said unincorporated. And this is the lawyer section because you have to be very careful with that section because, you know, you make a mistake there and it's lawyers. You know, it's what, how many lawyers would you say you have in Mableton? Thousands. So you make a mistake there, you have a thousand people who have law degrees who are like, no, you get this right. So it's basically a translation of the county's code on this. I haven't heard of any historical issues that the county has had with lawyers with respect to this. So I think that this is a very safe system to put in place. I do plan to bring it back to you for a third read. And I would just like to clarify, the charter says that your ordinances have to have a final form for adoption. So that final form for adoption is the requirements under your charter for any ordinance to be adopted. And those requirements, there are three in particular that your charter requires, and that's that you have to have a title. If we don't have a title, then your ordinance won't be effective. You have to have a subject matter that relates to the title. So for example, with this particular ordinance, we called it just a business license occupation taxation. And then you have to have a very specific enacting clause. So all of those have to be within your ordinances. And then it also says that you can put policies in effect that say, you know what, our final ordinances have to have additional requirements. They have to have maybe a cover sheet that gives you this information. Like, I've had previous cities who've required a cover sheet with a financial impact. They had a bigger finance department than you, so they had the resources and the tools and the staff to do that. But my point is, is that you have the flexibility to put additional requirements in your ordinances. And if you think about it from a practical and a logistical standpoint, if you had to introduce an ordinance, because the only way I can ever introduce an ordinance to the council is through a public meeting. I can introduce, I can go up to one council member and say, here's an ordinance. But for me to introduce and document that is a formal introduction, it has to be at a public meeting. Now, I can do it through email, and that's informal. But to, the only way to get the direction and voice of the council is to do that at a public meeting. And if you could not amend that ordinance after the introduction, that means that you would be stuck with, let's just say, your budget ordinance. Whatever I introduced, you'd be stuck with it. And it would negate the need for public comment. It would negate the need for you to even give me direction because the ordinance would be what I told you it was at introduction. So I just wanted to be, just clarify for you that you do have the ability to craft and to fit the ordinances based on the feedback that you give, that you get from the public. Every city in the state of Georgia, their budget ordinance, it changes substantially. Budget ordinances are introduced, they have multiple public comments, they have multiple hearings, they incorporate council feedback, citizen feedback, outside organization feedback. So that's just where you are in this process and having this grow and evolve to where you want it. My recommendation would be that sometime in November, preferably November 30th, you consider adopting this. It's not required that you adopt this November 30th. We can push it to the first December meeting, but that you just anticipate in the near future we get this in place because the renewal period is approaching for businesses. And I think to give businesses the most level of stability, security, and confidence in this process, I think it is incumbent to set the parameters as soon as reasonably practical.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. And hopefully, a lot of those businesses are tuning into our city council meeting so they're figuring out what's going on. But I do agree that I think this is something that is worth taking a little more of a look at, but absolutely something that we look to move forward with. Because again, with the pending January 1st date coming up, we want to make sure that we are being respectful to all of our businesses and we're giving them proper and due notification about what our intentions are around the taxes. So with that said, councils, anyone have any comments that they'd like to make on Anyone? I'm going to do like a countdown. All right. Hearing no comment on this matter of old business, we will, I will not ask for a motion to vote on this. We'll carry this into a next meeting to allow for more time for feedback and further review. So with that said, we will move on to item nine. Item nine is an open matter of discussion. Madam Attorney, is there anything that you have that needs to be discussed?
I'm sorry, Mayor.
No, it's just an open item for item nine for discussion.
No, Mayor.
I would actually ask if you are inclined, is there any update that we could provide the council on the litigation of the city since that was brought up earlier? And we haven't spoken about it at a council meeting, so I'm just, is there anything to add at this time?
So the lawyer in me says absolutely not.
That's good enough. I wanted to ask.
And that's because it's litigation. But I do know that the public is concerned. And I will say that I'm confident in the city's position. The outside council is confident in the city's position, and we're just committed to protecting the city and residents' interests and the council.
Thank you. With that being said, you can roll right into item number 10, which is your comment.
No additional comment, Mayor.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, any comments?
I have no comments.
Thank you. With that, we'll go to item 12, City Council Comments. Councilman Davis, do you have any comments for us this evening?
Yes, briefly. I just want to say that, again, I don't want to sound like a broken record, but I'm proud to be on the council, proud to serve. I look out in the audience, I see a lot of you that have been worked in the field, so to speak, with your hands to the power for the community. And I'm always impressed by the level of concern and the level of care the residents have. I am, like I said before, I've traveled from one end of this country to the other, in corporate America, as a musician, all those things. And I even come from a, my hometown is an example of example of a city that has so much wasted potential. And I've heard just tonight, how we've talked about how Mableton, the city of Mableton, has been a diamond in the rough. And it is. It always has been. And a diamond in the rough is something that indicates that there is a lot of potential right here in this city. And I'm looking forward to seeing that potential realized. I really am. Again, it's going to take a lot of work, a lot of work working together, a lot of vision, a lot of us just having that concern, and there's enough brain power just in this room alone to make that happen. I'm thoroughly convinced of that. So again, just proud to be a part of this council, proud to serve under distinguished Mayor. You can pass me a 20 after I say it.
Say that again.
But in all seriousness, this city, this city has the potential to be something so special, because it has special people right here in it that can make this thing work. So let's work together, let's make this happen, and let's be a diamond not only for the metro area, but actually for the nation itself. That can happen with the people we have right here in Mableton. And with that, I will be quiet.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Good evening. As we've been talking the entire time, I've been taking some quick notes, so I just wanted to make a quick comment to thank you all tonight for coming out and exercising your civic duty by providing your feedback and suggestions on the transitional spending plan. As you can see, a lot of thought went into that plan, you know, by the mayor, the council, the city staff. And it's very important that you all came out tonight and see it and also provide your feedback on it. And I think I speak for everyone on the council here and the city staff when I say that, we do appreciate that. And it's very, just incredibly motivating to know that you're with us and that, you know, you continue to stay here and help us figure this thing out. So I just wanted to thank you all for coming tonight and hope you have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jeffcoat.
Good evening, everyone. So great to see all of you out here, and we want to thank you again for coming out to support our city. Muhammad Ali said that service is the rent you pay for room here on earth. And so I think this council has, we paid our rent. We put a lot of sweat equity into what we've done with working on this plan for our budget. And although we at times have a difference of opinion, we have a lot of respect for one another. And so a comment was mentioned earlier about, you know, there was a bit of divisiveness with three voted here and four voted there, and that's not the case. We don't always agree. I don't always agree with Michael, I don't always agree with TJ, I don't always agree with Deborah and the rest of us. But there are times where we do agree, and there's a general consensus across the board that we all want to move this city forward. And so I just want to thank you all for your passion about this community, and there's a lot of diversity and thought. And so someone asked about, you know, how can we help? Well, we need all hands on deck. We need everyone who, if you're a part of District Three, you know, we'll have some town hall meetings and you'll get an opportunity to, you know, volunteer your skill set and your expertise, because it's going to be needed, right, as we build the city. And also, lastly, I do want to thank all the veterans. Veterans Day is coming up, as Michael mentioned. We want to thank you for your commitment, your sacrifice to serving this country. I'm a 28-year veteran, I'm proud to say that. I've served and I continue to serve. So thank you. And in the future, hopefully, we'll have a Veterans Commission, and we'll be able to provide additional resources and services for veterans within our community. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilwoman O.
Good evening, everyone. I just, I'm going to be re-saying a lot of the things that are even said. I just want to thank all of you who came up for public comment today. It can sometimes be a little scary to put yourself out there and say what's on your heart, what you want. But as Amelia told us earlier, democracy depends on public participation, and it's a very important part of the city that you are participating. And so thank you for being here tonight to say what is on your mind, and just know that your feedback is valuable and we are listening. And thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Ferguson.
I'll be quick today with my comments. I'd like to wish all those who sacrificed their life, their sanity, their families in pursuit of our, oh, I'm not on. I would like to wish all those who sacrificed their life, their sanity, their families in pursuit of our freedom today and yesterday, a happy Veterans Day. One day and 300 million thank yous is not enough for your service. As I think back on my service, I took for granted the job, I took for granted the opportunities. What I didn't take for granted was Chief Coffee and my high school friend, Brandon Owens. Growing up in a military family, so you guys want transparency? This is transparency. Growing up in a military family, I didn't want to go into the military. But then my life circumstances changed so much, and I quickly realized that I was not ready for college. But these two men showed me that there were other options for me other than working at Taco Bell. These two poured into the 17-year-old knucklehead and helped propel me into a career in the 48-year-old knucklehead that sits before you today. I'm telling you this story on the day where we are talking about the spending plan and the road ahead, quite simply because the military and civil service are not sexy at all. But they are the backs on which this country runs. So I implore you to seed into your young people the need for these careers. I also implore you to simply be a neighbor and share your story with our youth. They need us and we need them. When I get older and grayer, I hope there's a generation to pass this city on and this country on, too. In that vein, I also want you to know, and I'm about to be done, that there are programs that can help. One such group is the Boys and Girls Club of Cobb County. And there are currently 40-plus young people looking for bigs. Consider being a big. These littles need us. If you would like more information, feel free to reach out to me. And again, any email that you need for this council is firstname dot lastname at mableton.gov. So tj.ferguson@mableton.gov. Please feel free to reach out, and let's get these littles some bigs, and let's continue to push this wonderful city forward. Again, happy Veterans Day.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilwoman Herndon is obviously not here with us today, but she told us to let all you guys know that she is watching, streamed in, including about what is going on. So I thank her for, even though she's away, dealing with some family issues, she still wanted to take the time to let you guys know that she's plugged in, included in with what's going on as well. So for my comments this evening, a couple of things, I want to make sure, try to give little updates, kind of what's going on, what's happening. And I want to continue to say that I hear you guys about communication and knowing what's going on and knowing where meetings are. Although, I do have to say, we just had elections two days ago, and, you know, we didn't, in the city of Mableton, but a lot of people did reach out to me going, where do I vote at and who am I voting for? And of course, I say Mayor Owens, of course, but I won't be on your ballot, don't bother to go vote. But, you know, it did make me think of something, as all of us who have obviously ran for office, how challenging it is to get people to understand what's going on in their community. You know, I remember during our campaigns, there was discussion around our voter turnout being, you know, 12%, 13%, 15%. So as you talk about, you know, getting plugged in and finding out about council meetings, it's in a lot of ways no different than elections, right? Meet us and we will help you find out what's going on, but low turnout rates are low turnout rates. We want to continue to change that. We want to make it more appealing and available to know what's going on with the city and what's happening. When we're having meetings, someone mentioned some avenues earlier. We are taking it to heart, and we will ramp that component up even more as we go forward. So I wanted to make sure I mentioned that. From an additional communication standpoint, as Councilman Ferguson said, our emails are up and running. Please feel free to reach out to us, all of us via email. There will be some more generic emails set up in due time. Our computers have came in. I have y'all's computers, and we'll figure out a time to get those dispersed, as well as our phones. In the meantime, though, I do have a couple of things I want to give you guys. I went out and purchased some cards, they're called DOT cards. And these cards are basically digital, they are digital business cards, if you like. So I want to make sure all the council had these. You basically just tap it on your phone, you have all of our information, website and everything. I kind of thought it would be cool for you guys to have, but also conserve, so we're not cutting down trees. And also, as information changes, you'll have it right here. So give them a few days to get this set up and then, you know, start tapping the cards to get more information out. I want to make sure I acknowledge my executive assistant that just started with the city. Her name is Lily Smith. Lily, are you still here? Thank you. Thank you for being here with us today. Thank you for helping. She just started and was already, has already proven herself to be immensely helpful. I've got at least one more hour's sleep because she was here helping. Part of what you see here was some of her handiwork, helping us put this together as well. As we continue to build more staff, we will become more effective, more efficient, and overall, a better city government. So I want to thank her for coming on board. She comes to us from the great city of Kennesaw, where she was the deputy clerk in Kennesaw. So she has municipal experience and Cobb County experience as well. The idea about getting engaged and how do you get engaged, I want to, I've talked about it before, that the time is coming upon us for you to get more and more engaged. I will read off a couple of ways that you could get engaged, and that would be through our planning commission, our parks and rec commission, housing commission, arts and culture commission, youth commission, commission on aging, meet Mableton, which is our visitor, will be our visitor and tourism board, the zoning board, alcohol license review board, downtown development authority, environmental sustainability commission, keep Mableton beautiful, historic preservation committee, and our veterans commission. These will be fantastic, incredible ways for each and every one of you to get engaged. It is coming. We can't do every single thing at one time, but I am absolutely looking forward to a time soon when we can have an inter session about every one of these and talk more about what it's going to take to get these stood up, when we're looking at bringing them online. But I can tell you this, each and every one of these has a board that will need people to be involved in. So as I said before, we will continue to make ourselves available. I want to make sure that that sign-up form that Councilman Ferguson talked about before, that I think may be up to about 300 now, we would like to get up to around 500 before the end of the year. So we will push that back out again to make sure that people have the opportunities to voice their concern and ability to get involved with the city. Also, I don't remember who handed me this, but, say it again?
Where can you find Facebook?
Oh, yeah, Facebook, yeah, thank you. Where can you find the forum? On Facebook, we will put it on Facebook on Nextdoor. Reach out to any of us for the link for that as well. Our intention is making sure as many people have that access as possible. Of course, as soon as we get the website up, we will have it on there first and foremost. I have to be very transparent with you guys. This past week, obviously, a lot of time has been spent on this. And Councilman Ferguson was traveling as well. We did not spend as much time on the website as we would want to in this past week. Priorities are always something that we're juggling, and knowing that we needed to make this presentation this week, again, a lot of time was spent on the presentation. We are still remain very, very close on getting the website done and up and running. And as soon as we do, we will be loud and proud about that. Again, it's an interim website. It's something that we're putting out to make sure we get, you know, at least the information out to you, start to build on some of these services we want to bring, but we will continue to work diligently to get that out just as soon as possible. I think the last thing I wanted to make reference was on the Chattahoochee Riverlands project. I think most of you may be aware of that. Down the street from Discovery Park, there was an event held not too long ago at that location. I was actually a part of their, a part of their steering committee, and we had a meeting today, and they have released a survey of their own about the Riverlands Gateway Park and the project they're doing there, and they would like to have feedback from people in Mableton. They've had several proposals about what would be there. There's kind of an open green space for events. There is biking and walking trails that belong to Chattahoochee River. There will also be a proposed boat ramp that will be there along with different facilities. It is basically at the corner of Discovery and Mableton Parkway, right there as you go over the river. Charlie Brown Airport sits on the other side. There's plans on literally on both sides of Mableton Parkway where this park will reside. Again, we'll make this available on our website as well. This is going to be something that's going to be impactful for us as well as the city continues to grow, we have more parks and more green spaces. So please take the time to go out there and fill that out. And with that, I think that wraps up all of our comments. Again, I'll echo the fact, thank you for coming out today, I definitely do appreciate it. Thank you for the epicenter for allowing us to have our meetings here as always. And another shout-out to our veterans. Thank you for your service, thank you for your commitment, and thank you for your valued service to this country. So at this point in time, again, thank you for everyone for coming out. We will, at this point in time, move into our executive session. And so for those of you who will not be staying with us past this, for a final time, thank you. With that being said, I will entertain a motion to move us into executive session for litigation, real estate, personnel, and exemptions.
Make a motion to move to executive session for litigation, real estate, personnel, and exemptions.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Having it so moved and seconded, I'd like to ask for a vote. All those in favor of moving to executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Hearing no opposition, we will move into executive session. For this spending plan presentation, I want to make sure that, send an email to cityofmableton@gmail.com. You can email any of your council people, you can email myself. We will, I think we'll also put this on our Facebook as a link. So you'll have ample opportunity to be able to get it. Our clerk will have it as well. So please don't hesitate to reach out. Again, we have a couple more weeks for your feedback before we will move into a proposal to approve it. So we look forward to hearing for your feedback. With that said, we will move into executive session. Thank you, everyone. I'd like to thank everyone for sticking around with us while we were in executive session. At this point in time, I would like to entertain a motion to close executive session.
I'd like to make a motion to close executive session.
I second that motion.
Thank you. So it's been moved and seconded. All in favor of exiting executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. No opposition ayes have it, we now have exited from executive session. That brings to item 14. Item 14 is a resolution providing notice of intent to collect occupation tax. I don't think occupation tax is anything new to anyone at this point in time. What this item allows us to do with this resolution allows us to officially notify Cobb County of our intent to collect occupational tax. We have a requirement to provide at least 30-day notice to the county, so this resolution will allow us to do that. Madam Attorney, anything else you'd like to add for item 14?
Yeah, I would just like to ask for permission to change the dates from December 12th into the 13th. And the reason I think for December 12th is that we have to give the county notice. And I just, tomorrow's a holiday.
Yeah, so tomorrow's a holiday.
Yeah, so tomorrow's a holiday. And then the 12th is actually a Sunday. So I think just out of an abundance of cautious caution, if we make it December 13th to be the effective date instead of December 12th, it just makes sure that, because I usually hand-deliver a copy to the county. I email, hand-deliver, but I just don't know if I have it hand-delivered tomorrow if anyone will be present. So if we make it the 13th, that will be more than sufficient notice. So just request to amend the resolution to have it the 13th. And then, you know, that's where you will do the, you'll transfer the responsibility for renewal and registration of business licensing within the city. And then it will be for calendar year 2024 and thereafter. And then I also wanted just to put clarification that this transfer is not for the permitting, licensing or keeping, storing or sale of alcohol beverages or the collection of alcohol excise taxes, nor is it for the issuance of zoning, building or development permits, approvals, certificates of occupancy, building development inspections, or the fines or application and other fees assessed for the, for that development activities. And then it's not for parks or recreation or any of those type approvals or fees that are assessed. And then I just put a future note that, which, which is what I put in the last one, the last notice is that the city will continue to notify, notify the county pursuant to 7/15 of additional transfers as the city makes those, as the city makes those determinations. I also put a subsection in here for notices to businesses, where I put all Mabelton businesses are hereby notified to apply for slash renew their business license occupation tax certificates and to pay the accompanying fee with the city of Mabelton, Georgia for calendar year 2024. And I put a footnote here that I just wanted to clarify to businesses that the occupation tax certificate will not authorize you to serve alcohol and that the occupation tax is separate and distinct from the alcohol excise tax and that until the city transfers alcohol licensing, that applicants wishing to renew or apply for alcohol will continue and should continue to do that with the, with Cobb County. So my request would just be to approve the resolution with the, with my authorization to amend accordingly, which includes the ability to amend accordingly as to how I've stated today, which includes the ability to change December 12th to December 13th.
To the, to the 13th, correct?
Uh huh.
Okay. I, I think that it's going to be key with us passing this resolution and giving information to the county, but, but also the fact that we're going to have to be clear about how we communicate with our businesses around this, particularly those that are serving alcohol and understand that they're going to be getting their business license and occupational taxes with the city. However, they still have the need to have the registration and license for alcohol go through the county. So I, I want to make sure that we are being thoughtful to our business community about how we are communicating that and being effective in letting them know so that we minimize the confusion around that. Anyone else have a comment?
I have maybe two comments. One is, I was told that Cobb County has already sent out notices to businesses to renew their license. But is there any plan in place or something we should, is that maybe a problem if someone has already paid to Cobb County to renew their license?
Yeah.
So the, to the first part of that, we are going to work in unison with Cobb County as far as future communications that will go out to all businesses in Mabelton to help them work through that transition and speaking with a common voice, both from the city of Mabelton as well as Cobb County, so that, again, a unified voice is what they hear. We understand that some communications have gone out, but preliminary conversations with the county, they have agreed that they will work in unison with us. As it relates to, to pay and the dates for that, you want to speak to that, Madam Attorney?
So I put language in here that authorizes the mayor to provide up to two months of waiver of, two months waiver of, no, you know what? That's not in here. I apologize. That's in the occupation tax ordinance.
No one, no one would have paid yet.
No one would have paid.
Well, so, so the mayor and I did have a, a conversation with the county last week and they are very happy to continue to meet with us so that the communication, so one voice goes out. And I think that's what the concern is, to make sure that there's not a level of confusion and we're saying one thing and we're just not in, in tune with the county on this process. And then after the mayor and I met with the county, I did receive a call from the county just letting me know that they are in the process of setting a meeting for us to get together and work out all these logistics and issues. They said that approximately 70 businesses who they believe to be in the city of Mabelton have already made payment and they're going to isolate those businesses so that we can, when we meet with them, we can establish, establish just a process for those businesses being transferred to the city and then shoring up those payments because they need to just confirm that, are those payments strictly for the license or does it also include overpayments or underpayments? So they said that part of our discussions with, with them will be shoring up, confirming processes and then making sure that whatever notices go out between the county and the city are consistent as possible.
Okay. And then my second question is, how will the, take care of the service effect code enforcement? What, what's going to be different? What is the county still going to provide? What is the city going to, just how will the, what would be the impact?
So right now, you have substantially less code enforcement obligations because I've taken out the regulatory components. So the county, under the charter, the county has the ability to enforce all of the ordinances that regulate regulatory aspects of the businesses. So that means that if someone does something that is non-compliant with the regulatory portions of, of the county's code, it says that the county has the responsibility through their courts to enforce that. If there is difficulty with enforcement, the city also has the option to transfer that level of enforcement over to its own code enforcement and have its own code enforcement handle that specific item. But just keep in mind that as you transfer responsibility, you'll have to continue to handle items. So you can't just, you know, when you transfer, it's not just items, item-specific. If you transfer authority over, let's just say pawn shops, then you have that authority at that point. So you do have the ability, if you think it's not working with the county, to transfer the authority. And then the charter also anticipates that you might, that you'll enter into agreements with the county to continue to use their courts. So if you don't want to, let's just say you're having difficulty with a business, but you don't want to implement your own ordinance at that point, you want to continue to use the county, then you can enter, you can enter into agreements that state how those processes are going to be, are going to be in play. So you have a lot of flexibility. But because we have taken out substantial regulatory components, your code enforcement is just not going to have a lot of responsibility with the current draft as written.
So the county will still be providing some level of code enforcement to Mabelton?
Absolutely.
Yes, the county should enforce all of its ordinances with respect to pawn shops in those, in those particular businesses. Because the charter is very clear that the county's regulatory ordinances stay in place throughout the transition period.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any comment? Question, discussion? I'm sorry, do you have anything else? Mr. Davis?
All right. So hearing no other discussion, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the resolution providing notice to Cobb County of the city's intent to collect occupation tax, taxation, transfer responsibility for business licenses and other lawful purposes.
Well, as requested by the, the attorney, because I need to make those adjustments that I spoke of today.
As, yes, as requested by the attorney, making the changes that she had outlined. Oh, Madam Attorney, was it, was it just section 1A that you was requesting?
It's section 1A. I was going to change December 13th, December 12th to 13th. And then I was going to clarify after the word business licensing within the city. And that's the only, the only thing I think I, I mentioned today.
Okay.
Now, I always, I'll, I'll clarify to you, I always put in resolutions that the clerk or myself have the ability to make non-substantive editing. And that's just proofing.
Totally understand.
We need to renumber because we noticed that, you know, one of the numbers is off. It makes no sense to come back to the council to ask to amend it, to change a number section. So proof, typos, renumbering, the clerk or myself would have that authority to make those non-substantive adjustments.
Yeah, thank you. Now, I was referring to...
But December 13th is actually not a non-substantive adjustment.
No, not at all. I consider that material.
Yeah, so that's why I asked it for your permission to do that.
Sure, okay. So for clarity, I, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the resolution providing notice to Cobb County of the city's intent to collect occupational taxation, transfer responsibility for business licenses and for other lawful purposes, as denoted by our attorney.
I will enter a motion to intend to collect occupation taxes and notify the county providing the, the edit that needs to be made by the attorney.
Thank you. I'll have a second.
I second.
Thank you. With that being said, I'd like to move this to a vote. All in favor of approving the resolution as mentioned, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Hearing no opposition, ayes have it. Thank you. We've now approved the resolution to notify Cobb County of our intent. With that said, that brings us to the last item of our specially called meeting, item 15, everyone's favorite, adjournment. So with that being said, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
So moved and seconded, we'll call to a vote. All those in favor of adjourned in the meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing no opposition, meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Get your DOT cards set up.